I'd like to call to order the Spark City Council meeting of, hello? Of August eighth, August eighth, 2016 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members Ratty?
Here.
Lawson, absent. Smith?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt, absent. Acting City Attorney Cheryl Idding?
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Okay, if you'll all stand, please, for the invocation. I have here Pastor Omar Palmer, President of the Cayman Islands, no, he's with the Seventh Day Adventists. He's going to introduce his guest who's with us today. Thank you, Pastor.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and everyone present, I'd like to introduce my colleague from the Cayman Islands. He's the President for the entire church in that region, and he's going to be praying for us today.
Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you so much, it's a pleasure to be here. May I invite you to bow your heads with me. Our Father, we pause now to thank you for your tremendous blessings on us, and in a very special way, we thank you that you saw it fit to allow these, your sons and daughters, to assume the responsibility for this wonderful city of Sparks. And even as they have now come to deliberate and to discuss matters relating to the progress of this city, they have seen it fit to pause, to ask for your wisdom, your guidance, and your direction, and so even now, we ask that you will bless the proceedings, we ask that you will direct it, we ask, oh God, that the decisions they have to make will have your approval, and that your blessings and benediction will be upon the leadership and all, every resident of this wonderful city. We place this entire city in your hand, and ask that you will continue to multiply your blessings, as we give you thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Well, thank you, Pastor O'Connor. I think you've won the prize for coming the longest distance to say an opening prayer, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pastor Omar here is one of our speakers all the time. He issues the prayer, so we're so happy to have him, and we're happy to have you with him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. I've been in your talk for two weeks.
Fantastic.
Great, thank you. If you'd all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Bybee, would you lead us?
Yes, sir. Please show me in the clutch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have public comment. If you want to speak under public comment, please fill out one of these cards. I have two speakers at this time. You'll have three minutes. Ronald Dixon.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Donald Dixon. I'm here today to speak to you about the electrical grid, its security, and the prevention of serious trauma to our community, including significant injury and loss of life, should we experience a loss of grid power extending over a wide spans of our country for a time period measured in weeks or months. A condition which is proposed could possibly occur with the loss of less than a dozen substation sites in our country, out of the thousands now in existence. To quote the Wall Street Journal, "The United States electrical system is in danger of widespread and prolonged blackouts." Please recall that I met with you a number of weeks ago relative to this very issue, that is, grid security. I left you a copy of Ted Koppel's book, Lights Out: A Cyber Attack, A Nation Unprepared, Surviving the Aftermath. I also left a copy of the workbook, Triple Threat Power Grid Exercise, designed in large measure, I believe with FBI assistance, to help communities become more resilient given catastrophic threats to the grid. In furtherance of this resilience objective, and for those who have not seen it, I'm providing you a copy of the July fourteenth, 2016, Wall Street article titled, "Power Grid Left Exposed to Sabotage," that was the featured article, which concerns new federal security regulations for a limited number of substation sites, a number not covered by these new requirements and lax substation security. I recommend the city request the Nevada Public Utilities Commission, or whoever you consider appropriate, to certify electrical substation compliance for their jurisdiction, including our community. I am providing you a short history of my professional experience. Please note that I have local government experience, nearly five years at an executive level, and know how hard the job can be, I really do. I know you have limited legal authority relative to the grid, but you are an important leadership authority, and respectfully request that this vital concern be heard and echoed by you to the free possible. Ladies and gentlemen, please understand, the federal government has let you down, let us all down. We are way behind the curve. The grid is extraordinarily vulnerable, far beyond what I've covered this morning. That's not an exaggeration. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our friend Anonymous.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm speaking anonymously due to the retaliation we survivors of domestic violence are facing. I came to you last time regarding the Reno Police, excuse me, Sparks Police Department Reno, also, in fact, Washoe County. Law enforcement agencies are not trained in NRS 199. Those are crimes of public justice, so that when we go to try to get remedy for criminal activity by government persons, whether they're elected, appointed, hired, or contracted, we can find no relief because no one's trained in those statutes. I did meet with the City Manager, Driscoll, and I believe they said your name was Ivey? No.
Idy, Latin Idy.
Ivey, okay. Prosecuting Attorney Ivey. It was an unproductive meeting, nothing was resolved, but they do have documents should they choose to conduct due diligence, to find out how the databases that Sparks PD is using are falsified databases, and just getting information off the databases, like using Google, is a good place to start, but you have to confirm the information from other sources. I would like to talk to you about your excess liability policy. We file claims with the city, and of course, the city pays a premium, I'm not sure what it is, maybe $150,000, maybe $300,000 a year for the excess liability policy. The city then pays a self-retainer amount for any claims filed against the policy, or filed against the city. The policy requires the city pay a minimum amount, that might be $150,000, might be $300,000, and then the policy covers all claims over and above that, up to whatever the city's requested the maximum coverage be. There's no one investigating our claims. The prosecuting attorney did state, did confirm with us that she is not aware that the municipal court is destroying court case files of injuries to children. That is a right that the children have, those court case files to be protected until the children turn 18. So, we are concerned about the destruction of evidence prior to the children turning 18. That's when the children get to exercise their rights under NRS 11.250, and we would like to see this destruction of child abuse evidence stopped as soon as possible. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak under public comment? Okay. Moving on, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? We are going to pull 9.3, so if you'd include that in your motion, please. Do you have a motion? So, this is, the speaking is not working, is that correct, or?
Request to speak is working, the voting is not working.
I pushed Request to Speak. I got a softball field on here, it's not, it's not working, so. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve the agenda with the exception of 9.3, you said?
Yeah, we're pulling.
And pulling 9.3.
Second. Second. Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve the agenda as outlined by staff, considering that we are pulling 9.3. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Spark City Council meeting of July 11, 2016. Any omissions, corrections, or deletions?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve the minutes of July 11, 2016. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Announcements, presentations. Presentation on the Pathways to Aviation. Come on down, fellows, and if you would give us your name for the record, please.
Thanks, Mayor Martini. My name is Eric Henry. I'm the chairman of Pathways to Aviation, and sitting to my right is Pete Parker. He's our Executive Director, and we really appreciate the opportunity to talk about Pathways to Aviation, and economic development, workforce development, and aviation in Northern Nevada. And I'd like to turn it over to Pete, and then we'll wrap things up.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for having us today. We're doing a roadshow to talk about what was the Reno Air Racing Foundation. At one point, they pretty much promoted aviation in our community. What is now known as Pathways to Aviation harnesses the education to help put children, K through 12 students, on a pathway to careers in the world of aviation. Could be aerospace, drone technology, SpaceX, avionics, you name it. And we're doing that throughout the year. We've developed relationships with the school district, UNR, TMCC, and now we're looking in other parts of the state to provide the same opportunity. And our view, I've seen our presentation before, we're a little bit more fun-going and jovial, so we're trying to be nice today. One of the ways we're showcasing what we're doing with the education opportunities and the careers is at the Reno Air Races, September 14 to 18, we have 81,000 square feet of learning space for K-12 students, and then individuals of all ages. We're essentially presenting the next generation of aviation to the greater community. We're bringing industry in to meet with those students. We're bringing colleges in from different parts. We're also bringing in corporate to meet with those individuals, so anybody interested in pursuing a career in aviation has a next step waiting for them at that point in time. We're also working with an organization that was out here for quite some time, the Challenger Learning Center. They are partners of ours, so we're very thankful for that opportunity. And the corporate includes companies like here Nevada Corporation, who've been very instrumental in our growth, not to mention the growth of the aviation and aerospace communities here.
Perfect. Thanks, Pete. And just to get you guys, give you some understanding on what's happening. When people say Pathways to Aviation, I always think about pilots. And when you look at the statistics, obviously, we're near the pilots, but one or two out of 100 children will become a pilot. What we're looking at is the greater workforce of aviation, when you're dealing with engineers, mechanical engineers, structural engineers, electrical engineers, also avionics, aerospace, and even maintenance. So, what we're really looking at is inspiring young men and women to really start thinking about early on, pursuing a career in aviation, which really envelops all of engineering, sciences, even marketing and sales. So, we're very excited about that, and we're just excited about the opportunity to continue to spread the word of what we're doing, where we're at, and how we're really reaching these young men and women. And we'd invite all of you to come out and join us during the air races. We're doing, Wednesday's going to be High School Day, so we've got quite a few high schools already signed up, and Friday, or Thursday and Friday are going to be open for children. Last year, we had 3,100 kids show up. This year, we're expecting close to 4,000 to 5,000 children to show up at the, at the air races. So, we're excited about that, and we're excited about the opportunity.
Great. Questions? Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you for coming and sharing what you're doing. I think it's amazing, and as someone with a 39-year career in aviation, I appreciate the opportunity to reach out to kids, and especially with all the different expansion of availability of careers in aviation has expanded, obviously, since I started, and the future for that is great for our kids. So, thank you for what you're doing, and I'll try to get out to the air races.
Awesome.
Appreciate it. She was good friends with the Wright Brothers.
Is that on the record, Mayor? I'm not sure.
Speaking of the Wright Brothers, we may have one at the air races, too, as you talked about.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. One question I have, the Challenger Learning Center, where did that go?
It is currently at the National Auto Museum.
Oh, good, okay.
It's not at Spark Sign, no, sir.
No. Which is unfortunate, but I think they needed the room or something, or?
Yeah, we're working with them to look at sustainability and where we will be performing.
It was a nice program.
Agreed.
Very great, and the two people that ran, I can't remember the gentleman and his son's name.
Is Stephen Paul McMorris.
Yes, exactly.
And we've been, we've been supporting the Challenger Learning Center ever since their inception, six, seven years ago, before they even got all their, their flight center and everything else. So, they're a big part of what we're supporting, because I think they demonstrate and really provide an outreach for young men and women to really get excited about aviation, and I think we're on the verge of having that same excitement that we had in the 60s and 70s reoccur in aviation. So, it's a great time.
Great, thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? 8.1 through 8.7? Okay, looking for motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.7?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.7. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Moving on to general business, discussion and possible action on selection of a topic for the City of Sparks Bill Draft Request, BDR for the 79th Session of the Nevada Legislature. Mr. Mayberry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Driscoll, Adam Mayberry, Committee of Allegiance Manager, for the record. Item 9.1 today is discussion, possible action on a selection of a topic for the City of Sparks Bill Draft Request. Looking at your staff report, just be mindful that the city does get to have, submit one bill draft request every legislative session. We've had some internal discussions with our, with our team over the last few months, had a few topics that have arisen, but we haven't really identified one that has risen to the level that is really significant and substantial to the city, and that has a, a strong success of going through the legislative process successfully. So, those are some of the things that we look at as a team. Councilman Ratty and Mayor Martini serve on the legislative team, along with Mayor Driscoll, Manager Driscoll, and myself.
The other mayor.
And so, it is our, it is our recommendation that we not submit a bill draft request to the legislature for the 79th Session. And having said that, though, you know, should something materialize after the deadline, which is September 1st, you know, we can always reach out to a legislative tour or legislative committee and spearhead something that may develop later. Example that I'll use, in 2013 session, we discovered that our hotel room tax at 2.5% had sunsetted, and that's valuable funding we used for some capital improvements along Victorian Square, and so, we worked with the lights center, Smith during that time, and were very successful, and she was very successful helping to spearhead legislation and restore that room tax. So, there's always a second bite at the apple, but at this time, there's nothing that has really risen to a level of significant and substantial to the city. That's, that's the staff's recommendation.
Questions? Ms. Bybee?
Adam, I had a question on the Charter Committee with the, with the proposed changes to the election, the primary, the, the new changes to ward only versus citywide that the Charter Committee is recommending. Does that go separately? That's not, or is that, is that our one bill, or is that going to go to legislature in a separate manner?
Well, I, you know, traditionally, the Charter Committee has found a legislator to, to carry that bill. There's certainly an option that this body could use that as their sole BDR, but I think in the past, the council has, I don't want to speak for the council, but they felt that keeping the Charter Committee separate from the council, autonomous body, is best if they identify their own legislature, legislator, and if they can't, then we can come back to this body to do that. But that charter changes that you just described, we will seek, after the election, and identify a legislator to, to carry that language.
Okay, thank you.
And if we can't find one, we can always use our, our BDR, is that not correct?
We could, but we have to do that.
If the Charter Committee cannot find one, we can use ours.
We could, but we have to do that before September 1st.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was the same question I had about the Charter Committee, but this is the third session now that we haven't had a BDR? Third, third in a row?
I believe it is the third session, yes.
13, 15, 17, yeah.
No, I think we're good.
The 2000, we did have a BDR, 2011 session, but it was contingent upon the passage of a public safety advisory question, and so, that became moved.
That's right, I remember. Okay, thank you. Ms. Ratty, no? Well, you know, our legislature's been so good to us that we haven't had to have any BDRs, right?
Exactly.
That's what I thought, so.
We, you know, and I think if the next item, we'll talk a little bit about the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities, and there's a series of bill draft requests that their bylaw can carry, and so, those are substantial to all cities.
Okay. So, seeing that there's no bill draft, we need to use it, we don't have to vote or anything, right?
That's correct.
Cheryl?
There's no action on it.
Okay, thank you. 9.2, discussion and possible approval of 2016-17 dues for the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities, NLCM, in the amount of $20,402.78. Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Adam Mayberry, for the record. Again, again, this is a grivel of the 2016-17 dues for the Nevada League of Cities in the amount of $20,402.78.
Am I on the wrong one? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Go ahead, go.
Maybe I went on the wrong one.
You're on the wrong one.
I'm on the wrong one?
Maybe I went on the wrong one. No, I went on the wrong one, sorry. Sorry, Adam.
Good, good, we're good. 9.2, yes, this is the, so, approval of the dues for Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities in amount of $20,402.78. The league has been a very valuable partner in legislative affairs. It's been very valuable to us to have a unified voice, along with the other cities throughout our state. As you know, Mayor Martini is on the Board of Directors for Nevada League, and in fact, is expected to be the President of the League in 2017. Wes Henderson is in the audience with us today, if you have any specific questions for Wes.
Why don't you come up anyway, Wes?
And I do want to point out, too, that in October of this year, the, the league's annual conference will take place right here in Sparks, Nevada, and so, we're preparing our conference agenda, and very excited for that. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Driscoll. It's a pleasure to be in Sparks. As Adam said, we are working on our, on our BDRs. I'm really excited about the caucus system that our board created, where we have, you know, a large cities caucus, a small cities caucus, and a town and GID caucus. I, I think that system is working well. We will, by Thursday, know what our BDRs are going to be to submit to the legislature. I keep telling them, we have five, it doesn't mean we have to use five. If we have, obviously, five valid needs to submit BDRs, we certainly will. We're also really excited about the conference being in Sparks this year. We're, we're well into the planning process, we've got some exciting educational and general sessions planned, and also, some social events. And as I always say, the, the general session, the educational sessions are the meat and potatoes of the conference, but the social events are when you get a chance to interact with your colleagues from across the state and exchange ideas and, and solutions, because I personally believe there are no new problems, they're just problems you've never had, but somebody else may have, and may have the solution for you. So, I, I think those social settings where you're, you know, less formal, less structured, are a good chance to interact with your colleagues from across the state. And we certainly value Sparks's membership in the league, Mayor Martini, we appreciate all your participation and your input, and we're here for you. You know, we're your league, please reach out to me anytime, we can be of assistance.
Okay, questions for Wes or for Adam?
I make a motion?
Go for it.
I move to approve the 2016-17 dues for the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities in the amount of $20,402.78.
Do a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve 9.2, the League of Cities. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thanks, Wes, I appreciate it. You know, I think the League of Cities has helped us more than it ever has, since you've been there, and I appreciate it. We've got another tough legislative session coming up, I'm sure, so we'll be down there going at it again, so, thanks.
Yeah, you see, well, thank you.
You got it. Okay, 9.4, consideration of and possible action on a request for final approval of an amendment to the Spanish Springs Town Center Handbook, a planned development to revise the development standards to allow for mini warehouses used on a site approximately 41.65 acres in size in the NUD, New Urban District Zoning District located at 4988 Galleria Parkway. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is the final approval of the amendment to the Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Handbook. This amendment was to allow for the mini storages on the, within the shop, the plan development. On February 25, 2005, the City Council adopted the final Plan Development Handbook for Spanish Springs Town Center. Planning Commission reviewed the tentative handbook on April 24, 2016, and recommended that the City Council approve the Plan Development Handbook with this, with the modifications. As you may remember, the modifications to the handbook were to set the mini storage project back 20 feet from the south property line. This is on here, outlined in blue, is the property that would be for the mini storage, and there was some concerns from the neighbors of that project impacting them to the south. So, what the applicant did was they met with them and proposed to set the buildings 20 feet back from that property line. Then they will have landscaping and gates on either end to keep out people from going behind the building. On May 23, 2016, the City Council approved the tentative handbook, so we're back today with the final handbook, and see if you want to approve that. They request this, again, as I said, the final approval for the tentative handbook, and they're adding the mini storage. The only area that would be allowed is RCS02 land use designation, which is essentially just that area in blue on the map. The proposed amendment does not affect the integrity of the approved commercial development plan, nor does it affect the final handbook, and includes all the requirements in the tentative handbook for the construction of this, the proposed mini storage project, relative, especially to the south property line. Staff has reviewed the handbook and finds that it, that this final version is in compliance. It does not vary the proposed gross residential density, since there is no residential density in this Plan Development Handbook. It does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential. It does not reduce the common open space area. It's staff's opinion and Planning Commission that the final draft of the Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Handbook complies with the five criteria. There are no residential uses in this plan development, so the ratio of residential to non-residential is not affected. Potentially, the construction of the mini warehouse project could increase the amount of residential, non-residential use of floor area to be greater than if it was just a shopping center building, but it won't increase the traffic. It would also have no loading docks along the south property line, which if this was a commercial building, potentially would have loading docks on this, along that south property line. The 20-foot setback from the rear addresses the issues that were raised in the Planning Commission by the neighbors. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby? Ms. Ratty?
So, there's a parcel, it looks like it's at the end of the, it would be the east end of this project, between that project and the school. Does this orphan it so that there's no access to that parcel anymore?
Are you talking about this area here?
Yeah. Is that all one parcel?
That's all one parcel. That's all one parcel.
It's all one, okay.
It's owned by the Lord of Mercy. That would be, they're proposing to put the Lord of Mercy Lutheran Church there.
Okay, it just looked like there was a line on the map that I'm looking at, so I thought it was two parcels.
Yeah, no, the easements are going to be maintained, and that's one of the things, because along that north property line, the blue line there, there is a joint easement through the whole center, and that's one of the issues that we've been looking at, because actually, the building plans are in right now, so we've been looking at that. I mean, and we just looked at the administrative review on that, so that's one of the issues that we wanted to make sure that the easements and access is still there.
Okay, so that piece doesn't get orphaned. Okay. That's my only question, thank you.
Any other questions? Is the, any questions of the applicant? Does the applicant here want to make a statement or something? Is there any questions? And I mean, you don't have to if you don't want to, but... Is there any questions? Okay, quick statement will be fine then. Thank you.
Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. Karen did a great job of explaining it. We've worked hard with her. You've seen this before, there were no changes, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. All right, looking, it's not a public hearing, so looking for a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Uh, go ahead, Trevi.
I move to approve the final handbook of the Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 15066, and the facts supporting those findings is set forth in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve 9.4, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. It's working now?
It's working.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you. You're next, too, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay, 9.5 is consideration of and possible action on a request to amend a final Plan Development Handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 to add approximately 38 acres, revise the development standards and other matters probably relating thereto in conference, conformance with the tentative Plan Development Handbook in Kylie Ranch North. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is a request to amend the final, I mean, to approve the final Plan Development Handbook for the Kylie Ranch Phase 6.
Is there any way we can use this?
On the docuCam is the all, the entire Kylie Ranch. This is Pyramid Highway, Sparks Boulevard. Phase 6 is the outlined area here. So it's basically the southeast corner of the Kylie Ranch project. The tentative handbook for Kylie Ranch North Plan Development was, covers the entire 874.2 acres, Plan Development. The proposed Kylie Ranch Phase 6 handbook only covers 146.6 acres in the southeast corner of the Plan Development. The final handbook applies only to Phase 6 of the Kylie Ranch Plan Development. Phase 6, as I stated, consists of approximately 147 acres. This amendment adds approximately 38 acres to the phase, this phase. The other amendments included the neighborhood park, which is this piece right here. The other amendment, the community park is 9.24 acres, I mean, 42 acres, and is approximately, there is approximately 10 acres of open space that they're adding in this phase. There will be approximately 18 acres on the LMR, which is low-medium residential designation. There are also some changes to the Development Handbook to make it in compliance with the tentative handbook. Staff has reviewed the proposed amendments to the Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 Plan Development, and based on the standards listed in Sparks Municipal Code and NRS, staff is of the opinion that the final Plan Development Handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 is in substantial compliance with the tentative approved handbook, as approved by council. The final handbook does not vary the proposed gross residential density or intensity. It does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential. It does not reduce the common open space. There is no change to the floor area proposed for the non-residential uses. There is no increase in the total ground area covered by the buildings, nor is there substantial change in any height of buildings. Therefore, it is the staff's opinion and Planning Commission recommends approval that the final Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 Handbook is in substantial compliance, and that City Council should approve it today. I conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Karen, Ms. Bybee?
Karen, what is the residential, what the planned residential units, number of single-family or multifamily? Do we have those numbers of actual, in Phase 6, like how many homes or multifamily?
Um, not on the top of my head. I'd have to-
Okay, that's okay. I just didn't see in here, I was trying to get-
Yeah.
-an idea of residential impact, of availability of housing.
I, the applicant might know the total number of units proposed, but not-
For just Phase 6.
I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know at the top of my head.
Okay, that's okay.
Anyone else? Questions? Applicant like to say anything, or Mike?
Good afternoon, for the record, Mike Rayli with Ruperton Design Group here on behalf of KM2 Development. I think Karen did a great job summarizing. Just to answer your question real quick, the maximum permitted units within Phase 6 would be 1,348, maximum yield on it.
Do you have the breakdown between multifamily and single-family?
Yeah, of that, 623 permitted units within LMR, 446 within MR, and 279 within NHR.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Okay, any other questions? Looking for a motion? Is it yours, Trevi?
No, it's five.
This is Ron Schmitz.
Schmitz.
Your name's Ron.
Okay, my name's Ron.
Your name's Ron, you could do it.
Okay. I move to approve the final handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 Plan Development Handbook, PCN 14037, and the facts supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve Agenda Item 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Karen. Okay, next is 9.6, consideration of and possible action on a request for final approval of the Golden Triangle Handbook, a planned development on a site of 43.83 acres in size in the NUD, New Urban Development zoning district located at 6,000 Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada. Applicant is Golden Triangle. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, members of the council. Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner. This is a request for final approval of a tentative handbook you've already seen for Golden Triangle. Just a refresher on what was happening here, this was a portion of the, I always want to call it the Northwest, the Northeast Gulf Communities, the Kylie Northeast Gulf Communities. In 2015, that handbook was rescinded, and this became kind of a free agent. And it is currently master planned as mixed-use and zoned New Urban District, NUD, and is in the NSSOY, the North Sparks Sphere of Influence, and so requires a handbook to be The, this handbook was a little bit interesting in that they, they set out development guidelines and use standards, but did not put together a use breakdown as far as quantities of these uses. They left it open that it could be developed as, as single-family, multifamily, or commercial, or a mix of those three. They did have maximum build-outs for all of those uses, but didn't set in stone their mix of uses that they would be developing. So they have a palette, but not a, not a breakdown. That is part of, partly because of the requirement for the handbook in this area, we're going away from that. And then the comp plan update that's coming through, we're going to remove that requirement from the NSSOY. There's not a lot left out there that will benefit greatly from it, but this is kind of moving in that direction, and it will be reviewed as each project comes in, kind of how we review projects in the areas of Sparks that aren't in that NSSOY area. The, there was a traffic study performed for this project, which is basically stated, and staff is of the same opinion, is that the first project that goes into this development will require a traffic light at, on Vista. That traffic light will be roughly located along, about the middle of that long triangle, roughly, roughly in the middle there. The precise location will be, will be drilled down when they come in with a project, and that will be figured out. That traffic report will also have to be continually updated with the projects that come in to, to look at how they're going to impact the development, you know, going one way or the other, whether it's commercial or residential. As I said, this is the final handbook. We, the City Council has approved the tentative handbook, and as you've heard from Karen on the other final handbooks, this also meets those criteria that are set up by the NRS, and specifically that it does not vary the proposed residential, gross residential density, and does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential uses. We don't really know those numbers, but it's, it's not changed anything on you between the tentative and the final. It does not reduce the common open space, the common area and open space. There's no increase in floor area, and there's no increase in the total ground areas covered by buildings, and there's no substantial change in the height of buildings. It's staff's opinion and Planning Commission recommended approval of the final handbook. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for you? Go ahead.
I just want to say, I do support the flexibility that we're giving a developer. I think the market will bear what goes, what goes on to this property, and I like moving in that direction, to give them the flexibility, whether it's multifamily, single-family, just that combination, so I appreciate that. I think that's a good, good way to move forward, and I especially appreciate the fact that whatever goes in first will require the light, because the number of calls and emails I've been getting all summer on the speed, high-speed traffic on Vista is a headache for everyone, including our law enforcement, trying to keep up with it. They've issued 364 citations since May 1st. So that will be, I think that will help with the Indianapolis Speedway out there on Vista, and I appreciate that, and look forward to the development starting and that light going in, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I know the applicant is out of town, so he's not here. Are you representing them?
Yeah.
Anything you have to say, dear? Okay, yeah. No, okay. Anybody have a question for the applicant? Okay. Looking for a motion? Go ahead.
I guess that's a good one. I move to approve the final handbook for the Golden Triangle Plan Development associated with PCN 15058, and the facts supporting those findings is set forth in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve 9.5, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Ian. 9.7, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the officer of judgment in Carlson versus Craig, Conley, Gallup, Johnson, and Tracy. I forgot your last name, I'm sorry.
It's Alison McCormick.
Ms. McCormick, thank you.
Assistant city attorney. This is pending litigation, Carlson v. Craig and others. The plaintiff, Jeremy Carlson, is an incarcerated person, and he's representing himself in this excessive force case. Defendants are Reno and Sparks police officers. A settlement conference is scheduled for tomorrow morning. The plaintiff served on the defendant's a $50,000 offer of judgment, and that's up for the council's rejection or acceptance at this time. If there are any questions, I can answer.
Questions for Ms. McCormick? Okay. Discussion? Looking for a motion? Go ahead, Ron.
Based on the advice of the city attorney's office, I move to reject the claim of Jeremy Carlson's offer of judgment in the amount of $50,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve Agenda Item 9.7, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote, I hope.
Excuse me?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, dear, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to 9.8, is a first reading?
Bill number 2708, an ordinance by the city of Sparks amending Chapter 5 of the Sparks Municipal Code by adding a regional technology fee to applications and renewals of business license and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for Bill number 2708. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, August 22nd, 2016. Thank you. 9.9 is a first reading.
Bill number 2709, an ordinance amending Title 5 of the Sparks Municipal Code by adding Section 5.08.046, allowing the city to petition a court for injunctive relief in dealing with unlawful business practices and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for Bill number 2709. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, August 22nd. 9.10 is a first reading.
Bill number 2710, an ordinance amending Title 2 of the Sparks Municipal Code by amending Section 2.05.020I to include injunctive relief as an exception to obtaining City Council approval and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for Bill number 2710. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, October, August 27th, 2000, August 22nd, 2016. Yikes. Okay, let's move on to public hearing items. Public hearing, consideration of and possible action on Resolution Number 3300, adding a fee of 0% for the regional technology fee. Go ahead, Jessica.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and City Council. On July 11th, 2016, the City Council adopted the business impact statement for the regional license and permit platform, finding that the proposed regional technology fee does not have a significant business impact. Today, I would like to request approval of Resolution 3300, revising fees related to the development services, specifically adding a fee of 0% for the regional technology fee, and answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Jessica?
I just have one. So right now, we're setting that at 0% if in the future, so it would be based on a percentage, not a flat fee, like some of our other fees are a flat fee, licensing fee. It's a percentage fee, and right now, we're looking at 0, but it's-
Correct.
-percentage, not a flat, versus a flat fee.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. I'm looking for a motion or more questions. Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3300 for the regional technology fee for the regional license and permit platform.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve Agenda Item 10.1, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote, or please vote, whether you're in favor or not. Obviously, I'm confused. Passed unanimously. Ms. Attorney, would you keep an eye on me, please?
You corrected yourself so quickly, there was no need.
I'm used to making mistakes, always having something to say. Okay, where are we at? Comments from the public? Anyone in the public like to speak under the promise of voting? No. Comments from the City Council and the City Manager, Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have an announcement. Due to the resignation, due to a resignation, the city of Sparks is looking for someone to serve the remainder of a term on the Sparks Planning Commission. The term runs through December 31st of 2018, and this appointee would be eligible for reappointment for additional terms. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. You would click on City Services on the webpage, and then click Volunteering, Get Involved, and then you would click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on September 6th of 2016. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Bybee.
I just have one comment. As a proud Sparks native and supporter of Gymnastics Nevada, I encourage everyone to watch the Olympics tonight. Jake Dalton is competing with the USA men's team tonight for the team title, and he- Jake Dalton is competing with the USA men's team tonight for the team title, and he did awesome on Saturday and is going to be in the floor exercise finals later, but tune in tonight on NBC and watch Jake. Hopefully, the men will bring in the gold tonight and represent Sparks. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, again, we had a great hot August nights, I think, we didn't have any problems. Chief did we downtown Sparks, we're always, everybody's good down there and has a good time. It was another great turnout, as usual, and want to thank everybody involved in that. It's a lot of moving parts, a lot of people that get involved, volunteer, so, thanks to everybody that worked on hot August nights. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.